Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Westman Licensing Board for September 13th at 6:25 PM. Note that we have a quorum and five items on the agenda, the first being the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for August 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, appointment of Agent Jason Woods for Kennel Marine Ice Center at 760 South 7th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Three, appointment of Agent Anne Marie Craig of the Museum of Wisconsin Art, 205 Veterans Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number four, appointment of Agent Guy Fox of Town Place Suites at 175 East Water.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then last but not least, number five, an operator's license for Jenna Faith Peralt. I'll say. And we have a presentation. Go ahead.
Yep. Good evening. As you know, the Police Department reviews all applicants for operators' licenses to make sure they're responsible and able to maintain the safety of our patrons and citizens. We did so for Ms. Peralt and using her adult arrest and conviction have found two that we'd like to bring to your attention. On September 15th of 2020, at 10:15 AM, the Hartford Police Department received a report of an erratic driver that had struck several mailboxes. A Hartford police officer located the vehicle, stopped it, and identified the driver as Ms. Peralt. Ms. Peralt was intoxicated, failed field sobriety tests, and was arrested for OWI first offense and hit-and-run. Ms. Peralt's blood alcohol content at the time of the arrest was .250, two and a half times the legal limit. Ms. Peralt was convicted of both first offense, OWI, and hit-and-run on November 17th of 2020. One month later, the second offense, on Christmas Day, 12/25/20, at 10:45 AM, Hartford Police were dispatched to a residence for a disorderly 19-year-old female. The officers located Ms. Peralt, who was screaming and, as described by the officers, out of control. During the investigation, Ms. Peralt was found to be in possession of a marijuana-smoking pipe and a 1.75-liter bottle of Captain Morgan rum. Ms. Peralt admitted to drinking the night before, however, no preliminary breath test level was obtained. Ms. Peralt was arrested for possession of intoxicants by underage persons and possession of drug paraphernalia. On February 16th of 2021, Ms. Peralt was convicted of both citations in municipal court. Based on the history of alcohol and drug-related offenses, the Police Department believes Jenna Peralt will likely not be able to detect and enforce the over-serving of individuals and ensure the safety of all patrons and citizens. Based on that review, unfortunately, the department is recommending denial of the application for operator's license.
Thank you. Is Ms. Peralt in the audience? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the Licensing Board.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second to deny. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of denial, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Captain. And I have no further business before the Licensing Board. I'll adjourn by the call to the Chair.
I would like to call to order Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. First one is approval of minutes from August 16, 2021.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, approval of long-term storm water maintenance agreement, go right way. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This is another one of our standard agreements that the city enters into with property owners who are granted a storm water management permit. This one is for the go-right-way development, where they're installing a 8,900-square-foot building with associated parking facilities, both for their buses and for staff and visitors. So, as usual, we granted them that storm water management permit. They have storm water management facilities on the site, and this agreement is to ensure that they properly maintain and inspect those improvements so they continue to function as intended in the future. Staff would recommend approval of the agreement by the Board and Council.
Any questions for Max?
We need a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Now, any questions for Max?
Yeah, Max, quickly, the location map tells us what street this fronts, so I assume it's south, south of that street. Is this mid-block? It was hard to tell from looking at the map.
Yes, it is mid-block on Lang Street.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
With that, I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting on June 21st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for the discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Second, on the agenda, on items for consideration, we have a resolution to accept donations to the Park and Rec and Forestry Department, and Mike Yentz is here to tell us about that.
Thank you. And good evening. This evening, we have some very impressive donations that we like to present to the Westman Common Council and the community. The first 12 donations are in support of the Regner Park Beach House renovation project. These donations include $75,000 from the Westman Community Foundation Ziegler Family Foundation Fund. The second donation of $50,000 was donated by the Westman Friends of Parks and Recreation. The next donation of $40,000 from the Westman Community Foundation. The next donation of $25,000 from the Westman Community Foundation Judy and George Prescott Fund. The next donation of $5,000 from Westbury Bank Charitable Foundation. And the next donation of $5,000 from Bank 59. The following six donations for the Beach House project are from the Beach Bums Program that we have, and each one of these donations are for $1,000. The first donation was made by David and Jean Rennick. The next donation was by Jeremy Hahn. The third donation was by Rob and Chrissy Steiner. The fourth donation was by American Construction Services. The next donation was by Dennis and Cindy Backus. And the sixth beach bum was by Epic Creative. The last donation this evening for the Beach House was in the amount of $345 from Amy Schmolt and the Pound Organization. They do some recreation programs in the park. And one side note with the project, tomorrow is bid opening for this project, so hopefully we get some good news on that tomorrow morning. Continuing with the donations for this evening, we have a $100 donation. This was given to us by Kenny Aslan to go through the Ralph's Dog Park. The next donation of $25 was given to us by Laughing Mountain Popcorn for sponsorship of the 2021 Movie Night in the Park. The next donation was in the amount of $2,000, donated by Aurora Medical Center. This is for the summer lunch program in Regner Park. The next donation of $8,151 was by the Westman Disc Golf Club. They donated 19 new championship baskets for the disc golf course over at Riverside Park. They put them all together, put them out there in place, and the old baskets were donated to the high school, so they wanted to start a program up there. The next donation of $250 is donated by T-Mobile for the Library Recreation Center. And certainly not the, or the last but not least donation for this evening, in the value of $4,200, was by the Friends of Parks and Recreation. This was helped to support the 2,100 lunches that they donate every year for the Dirty Ninja Mudrun. That is part of the kids' registration. So, we would certainly like to thank all the donors and the sponsors that support a wide variety of park improvement projects, community events, and the support that we get for the future of our park and recreational activities here in West Bend. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you to everyone in the community for those generous donations. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an award, an awarding of a quote for Q2102, the Main Street traffic counts and signal timing, and Max is here to tell us about that.
Thank you. So, this item is to award a quote for traffic counts and signal timings on Main Street. We have three traffic signal corridors that we alternate studying over the years, Main Street, Paradise Drive, and Washington Street. This year, it's Main Street. We have six intersections at Humar, Paradise, Butternut, Vine, Hawthorne, and Decor Road. So, we published an RFP to obtain the services of a consultant to do the traffic study and propose a traffic signal timing plan. For those, we received four proposals, which are listed in the memo, and the consultant that met all the requirements listed in the RFP and at the lowest not to exceed contract price was TADI. We have worked in the past with TADI on this type of projects and also on several studies that I have done for traffic signals improvements linked to various developments throughout the city. Therefore, we believe they are able to perform this study for the city. Given this information, we recommend award of the contract to TADI in the amount listed in their bid not to exceed $8,922, and previously budgeted funds will be used to fund this project. A copy of the agreement is attached for signature if the Board and Council approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Jed?
Max, I was going to call you about this, and I forgot. I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Now, some of these intersections are controlled by the motion sensor. They look like cameras, but they're really not. But in my mind's eye, I think Butternut, Vine, and Hawthorne may be controlled by vehicle sensors in the pavement.
Actually, Butternut does have cameras as well. Which ones were the other ones?
How about Vine and Hawthorne?
Vine and Hawthorne, I will have to turn to Doug. Both loops.
That's what I thought. So, the reason I'm asking is, is it, do they, do the ones with the loops interact at all with the ones that use the cameras? Because otherwise, it seems to me, there's never, there's always going to be a conflict because the closed loop is working differently than the cameras.
Yes, they're working differently, but they're working in coordination. They are talking to each other. We do have communication within the corridors. I named the three corridors, Paradise Drive, Main Street, and Washington Street. On each of those corridors, there's what we call a master controller, and this master controller is talking to all the other controllers on the corridor and receiving and sending information. So, like you said, we will have something happening at one intersection, maybe the timing is off because we had a pedestrian come through, and then that's, we have a longer green on one side for the pedestrian, and that could throw the timing off. But because they communicate, we have adjustments throughout the day. All the controllers at all the intersections communicate with the master controller, who will adjust. So, to answer your, that was a long answer to your question. So, to answer your question, yes, they communicate, and there's a program in there to keep the coordination going throughout the day.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Max? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, that carries. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Next, we have the resolution accepting a donation from QuickTrip, and we have Chief Kudic here.
Good evening. You have before you a resolution a couple of weeks back. QuickTrip had a ribbon cutting at their fifth QuickTrip located on 18th Avenue in Washington. They chose the Westman Fire Department to receive their community grant that they like to do when they have a ribbon cutting. So, that's the resolution before you, accepts that $1,000 donation, and also places it into the expense account to purchase a large diameter hose roller.
Motion to approve.
Motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Thank them so much. Thank you, QuickTrip, for their donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a resolution for the Urban Forestry Grant. Mike is back with us.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have a resolution before the Council for a 2022 Urban Forestry Grant. This is a 50-50 grant reimbursement program. Project costs will be up to $50,000. The city would be responsible for 25, if we go to the max amount of 50,000. The city would be responsible for the $25,000 financial impact. We would use operational funds and CIP funding to cover that $25,000 commitment. The grant objectives will focus on continued replacement of ash trees that were removed during the Emerald Ashbore infestation, continued education for staff, continued improvement of our public outreach program, which we started two years ago, and we're going to continue with that. It's been very successful. And then we are going to continue to update our Urban Forestry Master Plan, and the last official master plan is before the Council back in 1995. So, we are working on updating that. Are we behind? Sure, maybe. With the infestation of Emerald Ashbore, things like that, we were busy removing one-third of our street trees away, wasn't kind of restructuring what we do on the urban forestry level. So, it doesn't really impact us with future grants. We are working on updating that master plan and utilizing Urban Forestry Grant to help financially support that. So, thank you.
Second.
I just had one quick question, Mike. Do we know, when are we estimated to find out if we do get the grant?
That would be in December of this year. Late this year, we would. We'd normally score pretty high on these grants.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second? Oh, John, question?
Yep, just one question. Mike, how are you doing on the ash burl between a curving sidewalk? Are we caught up?
As far as I know, John, we have one dead white ash tree left in the city of West Bend, Ash Street Tree. And that was just, it's marked with other ones for removal yet this winter. We are working on road right-ofways, like 18th Avenue, let's say, north of Park Avenue, getting things cut back. There's going to be a lot of woodlots that are out there, low-line areas, white lines that we're going to watch several hundred thousand ash trees die and fall over.
Okay, good.
That's just kind of a reality with it. But generally speaking, the hazards have been removed.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yep, great question.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution accepting donation to the Police and Fire Department, and we have Chief Kudic, and Captain Darin is waving to us as well here to accept on the police behalf.
He said I could talk. Chief Moeller wouldn't have let me do that, so. We, before you have a resolution to accept a $100 anonymous donation, the city received the donation with a nice thank-you letter that said thanking us for our service to the city and the citizens of West Bend. So, you have before you the resolution to accept it and then reappropriate the money into the Police Department Crime Prevention Account and $50 to go into the Fire Department on designated donation fund.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you to our anonymous donor as well. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for Lacklaron Conservancy and trail expenses. Mike?
Thank you. Earlier this year, Courtney Cox-Polsen, our Conservation Supervisor at the Conservancy, the Friends of Lacklaron, and the Westman Sunrise Rotary worked together and applied for a Rotary District Grant. The grant application was in the amount of $3,000. The goal was to fund several projects out at the Lacklaron Conservancy, including repairs to an eroding trail, constructing a set of new nature steps outside the Marin Center, and the construction of a new ADA-compliant trail from the nature center down towards the Lake Loop Trail. The grant team was successful in receiving these, the funding, the $3,000 in funding, and volunteers from the Sunrise Rotary, the Friends of Lacklaron, and the Park Rec Forestry staff today and tomorrow and moving forward will be working on some of those projects. The grant funding has been received and will be utilized for, we would like to utilize it for project expenses. And this evening, our department is requesting that the grant funds be appropriated to an expense account to cover those costs.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike, and thank you to the Sunrise Rotary and Lacklaron, friends of Lacklaron. And last up, we have a memo of understanding, donation advance to West Bend Baseball Association for the Carl Cuss Field.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have before the Council a memorandum of understanding that we are proposing, and this would be between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Baseball Association. Also joining us this evening is John Rozak. John is with the West Bend Baseball Association, longtime resident of West Bend and a true supporter of this project. West Bend Baseball Association has received various financial commitments for the renovation of Carl Cuss Field in Regner Park. Many of these commitments are the donations, are multi-year donations, where it might be half this year, maybe half next year, or things like that. That is very common with many of the different projects that we work on. This project is nearing completion. I would say we are at about 90% right now for Phase 1 completion, and the city has agreed, or we'd like to agree with this memorandum of understanding to assist the West Bend Baseball Association in making final payments for this renovation. We are requesting that the City of West Bend shall assist the West Bend Baseball Association in paying a total of $110,000 in expenses for the renovation of the Carl Cuss Field. West Bend Baseball Association agrees to pay to the city upon receipt all funds received from donations from the renovation of Carl M. Cuss Memorial Field in Regner Park. In the event that one or more of the donors does not complete their commitment to make the donation, the West Bend Baseball Association shall be responsible for making payment to the city as soon as reasonably possible. We have worked with Mr. Rozak and the Baseball Association. We have commitment letters from the five different donors that are multi-year donors. We have received their first donations towards the project. We are very confident that they will follow through on this. These are organizations and individuals that we have worked with many, many times, and they've supported us on many, many different projects here in West Bend. So, thank you for your consideration this evening.
Second.
A motion in a second. Do we have any questions for Mike? Jed?
What's the funding mechanism?
The fund balance.
It's just a temporary in and out of fund balance. One of the larger of the donors included in the $110,000, we have word that is, they're going to pay yet this year, but in order to meet the timing of the request of WBBA, we had to do it in advance of their, so they might even come sooner than 1-1 of '22. Confident they're all going to come in.
Any other questions? John?
Yep, I just, I just want to compliment the Baseball Association, John, for all your work and effort in putting this outstanding unit out there. It's fantastic field. I've seen it. It looks great, and you guys are taking initiative to make that one of the best ballparks in the area, and I know that a lot of kids are going to really enjoy playing there as well as adults. So, kudos to you guys for putting all this effort in making this happen. West Bend is really going to use that very well.
Well, thank you, and the city and the Park Department have really stepped up and helped us with this project. It's going to be involving kids, it's going to be involving girls softball, it's going to be involving the little league and all of the other things and the high school teams, and so it's going to be a multi-use facility, and the city has been very cooperative. Park and Recreation, Mike and Jay, it's very cooperative.
I just had one other question. I guess this might be for Ian. I'm really excited about this project, but the wording of "as soon as reasonably possible" if this does not come in as we are expecting, is that, is there any concern there with, I guess, legality and funds?
I mean, I put it in there just because, what if there's a hardship and one of the donors waits a year? I mean, obviously, we're not going to suddenly sue the baseball association if, so it's put in there with the intent that it covers us in case something falls through without trying to turn this into a relationship, which it isn't, where we're going to turn into a debt collector. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you've read that and you feel good.
Yeah, yeah, I drafted that.
That you feel good about that language.
Something had to go in there, so I threw, I figured that was at least something that protected the city in case a donor, you know, donation fell.
That's what I care about, is the city protected in this.
Correct.
So, thank you, Ethan, Ian. All right, I'm sorry, Alderman Allen?
Yeah, have the city done this before? Do we have a record of having advanced money to someone before?
Yes, we have. Many different parks, projects, park and rec projects where we have different service clubs that might donate $25,000 total for a project, but like over a five-year time period. This is very common. It's a very common practice for us.
If I may, we actually received one tonight. The first donation from Westbury was for $5,000 for 2021, and they've committed for the next four years to also fund $5,000, so a total gift of 25 over the next, over a five-year period for the Beach House.
Any other questions for Mike or Jay or anyone? No? All right, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, the West Bend Baseball Association and Carl Cuss Field. With no other business before us, I will adjourn the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy, and good evening once again. I'll call to order the City Westman Common Council meeting for September 13th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman model absent and excused. Please join me in rimes for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice.
Thank you. I'll note that we have 25 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for August 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Butchak. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, so nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll turn over to presentations. This is the presentation of Our Great Community by our Washington County Executive, Joshua Shelman. Welcome, welcome, County Executive. Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me. Alderman, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on this concept of Our Great Community. If you take a look at the first slide that it presented, it starts with a theme that I had during the campaign to be the first county executive here in Washington County, and that was this concept of manage growth so that it doesn't manage us. Over the course of the last 18 months, I've been working diligently on trying to articulate in policy form what that means and how I intend to address it in a vision that hopefully we can all subscribe to. You've probably by now heard the term silver tsunami sometime over the last couple of decades, and there's been a number of studies about what that is going to look like, not just in America, but across the globe. What's interesting, in a study that I read from EMZ, which is an organization that does a lot of research for, on workforce, for employers, local governments alike, 3 million baby boomers retired in 2020. That's up from 2 million in 2019 and in 2018, so a 50% increase in 2020 alone, and you'd think that that has more to do with COVID than it does with anything else, but the data really proves that this is probably the beginning of an accelerant that was COVID rather than just an anomaly from pandemic. In that same study, there's, there's a section that I would like to read to you in that same regard, the conclusion really of the study, and you can certainly go and Google it yourself. It's called "The Demographic Drought," and it's about a, oh, 40-page study. The conclusion is this. "A talent deficit of over 6 million Americans within the next seven years threatens not just colleges and companies, but our common way of life. Losing people means losing many of the goods and services and standards of living we have grown to expect. If we want classrooms full, jobs filled, packages delivered, hospitals staffed, and help available when we call, we need help." Excuse me, we need people. Excuse me, we need people. "People are a resource we can no longer afford to take for granted. As one generation ages, as the next generation opts out of the labor force, and as the coming generations shrink, we need to do the best we can to keep the people we have. Retain, retain, retain. Keep your people, keep your students. So, this is the lesson for colleges, employers, and families everywhere. Every student you enroll, every person you hire, every child born is so much more important than you have ever imagined. And for the millions of dislocated and job-hunting Americans, there is good news. Times of talent shortages also mean times of opportunity. The labor market needs you, employers need you. It is a worker's market. In a human capital economy, people are the key ingredient, a truth that will become only more apparent during the coming sandsemic. Every student, every employee, every potential employee is valuable." With that, Washington County's percentage of population, as you can see, that is 60 and older, is 20% higher than America at large and 10% higher than the state of Wisconsin. Silver tsunami means something even more incredibly important for us. So, to learn lessons and to think about what we're going to do about this, I ask you to look at the data from the last decade. This is the 2020 census data that just came out. Washington County had a growth rate of about 3.7%. West Bend's growth rate, and this is over the entirety of the decade, by the way, West Bend's growth rate was about 1.7%. Of course, if you divide both by 10, that's a shadow of what we need just to keep pace with the workforce that's required in our communities and in our county. So, what would managing growth in the next decade look like? Well, I think it starts with bringing our kids home. In Washington County, we graduate approximately 2,000 seniors every year from our high schools. There isn't a lot of data that we track. Once those kids leave those high schools, we really don't have a solid grasp on where they go. Superintendents and individuals from a workforce alliance basically say they think about 50% of them go to college. Another 25% of them leave the county, things like the military and things of that nature. But most of them aren't sticking around, at least not initially. The second step is continuing to welcome people and integrating them into our community. That's been happening for years as a first string and second ring suburb and ex-urban county. But the key, as I just read a moment ago from the EMZ study, is whichever places figure out how to keep their own people are the ones who are going to win the battle for prosperity for the next generation and that beyond. As Washington County Executive, my goal is I want to make Washington County that place where our kids want to come back and where they can afford to actually come back and where they can bring their friends with them and hopefully a few others that follow. And quite frankly, the only way for us to do that is by working together, because while the county can put forward any kind of grand vision that it wants to, it takes businesses to create the jobs to hire those people. It takes municipalities to create the zoning that allows for the housing that they can afford, and it takes good quality schools to educate the kids for the next generation to come. All of us, government, schools, businesses, civic groups, all need to work together as one to achieve a vision of this variety. You've probably heard the old Greek proverb, "A society grows when old men plant trees who shade they know that they'll never sit in." Well, speaking for myself, if you look at the next page, which is slide number three, in 2050, I'll be 70 years old. In 2051, actually, I'll be 70 years old. So, speaking for myself, these are very much trees that we're planting today that shade I'll probably never enjoy. But join with me in this shared vision to give our next generation the exact same opportunities that we had growing up and living here in Washington County. The vision that I cast and I ask you to join me in is listed there on the first bullet. "Washington County 2050, a place where individuals are connected to one another through trusting networks and common values in service to one another and our great community." There's many great things that are happening in Washington County. We just heard several of them, very generous donations, philanthropy and otherwise, that really make not only West Bend, but all of Washington County a great place. Those things, if we don't address now, the next generation staying here and coming here, those things are going to be harder and harder to come by. You see the three key tenants of this vision, identity, prosperity, and community. I won't read them to you, but they do underscore exactly what it is that I think we need to accomplish over the course of the next 30 years, and we can only do that together. This really revolves around this virtual cycle concept and something that has become a challenge, especially post-Great Recession. If you think about what West Bend was in 2020, I'd challenge you, go to the county's GIS page, pull up an aerial photograph from the year 2000, look at West Bend, and then compare it to aerial photograph of West Bend today. It has changed drastically, and if you did the same thing in Kenosha or in Janesville or communities all over the Midwest and really all over America, you'd see very much the same thing. But it creates a heck of a challenge, because what's created so much prosperity over the course of the last 50 years plus, the baby boom generation that grew up in it was prosperous businesses, and those prosperous businesses giving people the opportunity for prosperous lives. And then for us to stand here and listen to the generosity that you just heard about a few minutes ago, ultimately a prosperous community. The key is going to be for the next generation, for us to give them that same chance, that same opportunity. We've got to keep them in order for us to be able to be the ones that want to do that. So, how do we take that vision and turn it into a reality by working together? Well, there's a few things that I think we need to do. Few key areas, starting with workforce and education. They call workforce "the black hole of government," ideas and money that get sunk in every time there's a massive recession, people getting retooled and the different skills that they have, and then when good times come, those resources completely dry up. Well, we need to have a long-term look at what workforce and education really are. How are we connecting our kids to jobs right here in Washington County? Creating a pipeline for local employers to tap into and helping kids understand the opportunities that they have right in their backyard. We're going to need both short-term and long-term strategies. You can't go to any business in Washington County and not hear about the challenges that they're having firsthand with filling jobs. If you think about that story I just told a minute ago, looking at the aerial photo of the year 2000 compared to the year 2021, I just did a tour of Regalware. Regalware and West Bend Company combined about 25 years ago had 3,500 employees. How many do they have today? Any guesses? About 350. That's an amazing transformation. And if you walk through their facility, what they do in that facility is amazing transformation. The amount of artificial intelligence that is used, robotics that are used, the high skill level of the people who are working there is quite amazing. But they need people now. They can't wait for us four, six, or eight years to help get our kids into those jobs. We're not only going to need strategies for how to get those kids into those jobs over the next four, six, and eight years, but also a shorter-term strategy to help them today. And there's employers like that in every corner of Washington County. I think social capital and building community specifically is where we really, what really makes Our Great Community as a concept stand out compared to others that I have seen across the country. And I use the example of Jack Rettler. I don't know how many of you know Jack. Jack is the son of Pete. Pete's very active at Marine Park, employed at Marine Park Technical College and very active in our community in a number of areas. But the interesting thing about Jack was, is Jack is highly educated attorney here at Madden Law Group in West Bend. And he's a very smart guy. Interned for me for a few years over at the county. Graduate of West Bend West High School, super awesome kid and a great young family here in West Bend. Well, there's nothing that really would have stopped Jack from being an attorney at Foley and Lardner, except the former mayor, Craig Sedanico, and his connection to Pete Rettler and their desire to get that kid to stay and live in West Bend. The goal of Our Great Community is to replicate Jack Rettler 2,000 times over every year. And how do we do that as a community together? It's not going to be something that county government does. It's going to take all those organizations, including businesses and civic groups and churches that I talked about a moment ago, to make that happen. And it begins with housing, next-generation housing specifically. The median income, individual income in Washington County is right about $40,000. The median home value is just above 200, probably closer to 2 and 1/4 or 250 right now after the housing market that we've seen in the last 18 months. Homeownership is the key for every individual American. It's the American dream. Not just that, it's the foundation of community. Millennials or Gen Z, and I'm one of them, I can tell you, it's not that we haven't wanted a house, it's that we can't get into one unless you have a VA loan like I do, which makes it much easier. Having that down payment is a hell of a hurdle, not to mention finding a house in Washington County under $300,000 is almost impossible. And if you're not fortunate enough to be a dual-income household, at $20 an hour, if you use banking statistics alone, you can afford about $1,000 a month. Good luck finding a rentable house in Washington County for $1,000 a month or a home whose mortgage payment would be about $1,000 a month is around $200,000, even at ultimately low interest rates, incredibly, excuse me, incredibly low interest rates like we have today. We have to create the space to allow for our kids to have the exact same opportunities that we had. As I mentioned, this is a challenge that for every one of us has a part to play. The Our Great Community platform is something that I take very seriously, and I want to create a shared vision that we can all buy into. That platform is one where county government can provide human and financial resources to actually make a difference in the things that I've just talked about, creating social capital, creating housing that the next generation can actually afford to be in. We're also in the middle of having a next-generation housing plan and an event that I'll talk about in just a few moments to roll out what that looks like. What type of housing developments do we actually need? If you think about what's happened over the course of the last 40 to 50 years and you look at your own zoning code, and really zoning codes for municipalities throughout all of Wisconsin and probably most of the country, we've literally zoned out the type of housing that many people up at that table right now sit in. The types of homes and subdivisions that we've created by our zoning codes don't build homes that we can afford. Most kids, $20 an hour, can afford to live in. We need to work together to be able to change that, to be able to give them the down payments that they need. You drive down Highway 45 and how many billboards can you count that have signing bonuses? If you just stay here six months, $2,000, $3,000, $5,000. Those should be going towards down payments to help kids invest in our community so we can invest in them, investing in our business and carrying out that virtual cycle that I just talked about. Where I ask you to start thinking today in the city is that housing planning, zoning development challenge that I just talked about. Certainly, we don't want to have a situation where we build junk housing, but if you drive past the same neighborhoods that I drive past every single day, and I know where most of you live, and I know you drive past them every single day, or quite frankly, drive into them every single day, I'll point to one in particular, the northwest corner of Indiana and Washington. Think about the homes that are back in that neighborhood. If we can build that exact identical neighborhood again today in 2021, the sandsemic that I just referenced, that EMZ talks about in a 40-page white paper, will not be a problem in Washington County. If safety and education and the values that Washington County holds are really what most people want, and I firmly believe they do, we create the opportunity for them to thrive, they're going to take it, just like they did back in the 1950s and 60s when West Bend Company and Gale Company and Amity Leather were thriving. So, please, think about what does it take in the modern day where we know of the population challenges that the entire world has? What does it take to create the types of housing in the community for the next generation? And then take the Our Great Community concept and share it, support it, become part of it. One of the things that I'm going to ask the county to do is to build off of the Brownfields program that we've built and has been working, frankly, before my time. The Site Redevelopment Committee has been a collaboration between municipalities and the county for many, many years, long before I was county executive and at the beginnings of my tenure as county administrator, and had little to nothing to do with me. But it works very well because it's each of us working together to solve these problems. The county executive's not going to solve it. With all due respect, the city council and the mayor aren't going to solve it. The people who are going to solve it are the ones who work closest to it every single day, developers, builders, planners, city administrators, village administrators. They know how to get this stuff done. We need to empower them to do that with the human resources and financial resources to do so, and that's exactly what we're going to do. So, I'll close with this, some immediate next steps that I'll ask of you. First, please share the vision of Our Great Community. I don't think there's anybody up at that Diaz, and if there is, you're probably not going to get reelected, who doesn't want our kids to come back. Who doesn't want that? I certainly want it for my children, and I'm sure most people in Washington County want it. If you're not willing to share that, go and join a civic group. I know most of you are probably involved in some way, shape, or form, but consider joining one if you haven't, or a church leadership team. That's where community starts. Find one young person, one person in their teenage years, and find a way to convince them to stay in Washington County. I don't care what kind of work they do. It doesn't make any difference. I don't care where they live. I don't care what their median income is. I don't care what their household income from mom and dad are. Let's get our kids, and you can make a difference with one child right now. And once again, please start thinking about those zoning codes and what kind of local regulatory hurdles we've already put in place. Finally, I mentioned this a few minutes ago. October 7th is the day that we were going to have an event at the Washington County Fair Park. We're calling it the Next Generation Housing Event. What we've done is we've asked EDWC to do a housing study. It actually, the idea isn't mine. It came from the Hartford Area Development Corporation. In Hartford, in their industrial park alone, they have about 800 vacancies that they can figure out how to fill. Housing has been identified by that group itself as one of the key factors for how they want to solve it, and they asked the county to take it on as a wider issue, which the housing study, as you'll see on the 7th, shows everybody in the county is facing the same problem. Please take the time to attend this event. It's not going to be just elected officials. Lord knows, we could never solve this problem by ourselves, but it's going to be all of the groups that I mentioned a few minutes ago. We're going to invite civic groups and churches, businesses, nonprofits, and of course, elected officials and appointed officials to be at that event. We really need to come together to solve this issue, and it'll take every one of us to do it. And finally, I warmly welcome your ideas and your thoughts. Feel free to shoot me an email. Most of you up there have my cell phone number. If you don't, you can ask one another. I'm certainly happy to talk to you about it. Folks, this is not, there's nothing political about this issue. There's plenty of issues that we can disagree with politically, but this isn't one of them. This is one of those that we have to put our heads together and find a way to solve, and I ask for your help in doing it. I thank you for the time and opportunity once again. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll open it up if there's any comments or questions from the council.
Where on October 7th is the event being held?
Washington County Fair Park.
Fair Park.
Yep, and each one of you will get an invitation to attend that as well.
Any others? All right. Well, thank you so much, county executive. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing this with us, and we look forward to next steps and talking with you.
Ah, great, thank you. I have a few handouts I'll just pass over here, and if you can just keep them, you can feel free to give these to somebody and share the vision if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will move on to our consent agenda consisting of items 2 through 11. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Allen and Dolnick. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. They'll move on to agenda items for consideration, and we have Alderman Butchlick take up number 12, as I'll be abstaining.
Resolution, accepting donation from QuickTrip. Motion to approve. Any motions have been... All those in favor?
Aye.
John, who's seconded the motion?
Randy.
Randy, okay, thank you.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carried.
Thanks, John. And move on to number 13, mayoral appointment of Troy Lathery to the Ethics Committee.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kennedy and Keeler. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 14, mayoral appointment of Stephen Chojshnacki. I think I said that right, the Solid Waste Recycle Committee. Recycling Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Kayla and Butch like. Any questions on them? Hearing none, all's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 15, mayoral appointment of Patrick Campbell to the Solid Waste Recycling Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Kayla and Butch like. Any questions on them? Hearing none, all's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 16, appointment by the city clerk of Donna Kleymouse to the Board of Cameriers. I was heard, I heard that there's no action actually needed because this didn't need to come before us, and it's just an appointment that staff can make, so we could just skip, we don't even need to do that, we can just skip over that item. All right. So 17, an operator's license for Jenna Faith parole, and the recommendation was to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I'll give that to Butch like and Dolnick. All those in favor of denials, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number 18, RFP for Solid Waste Recycling related services for the city of West Bend. While presentation by Public Works Director Doug Newman. Doug?
Good evening, council. As most of you know, the city of West Bend contracts for curbside recycling services. Our current tenure contract term ends on December 31st of this year. So on June 25th, requests for proposals were sent out to five vendors. We received four proposals back by the July 16th deadline. A spreadsheet indicating the fee breakdown should have been in your packet that you all received. The Solid Waste and Recycling Committee met on August 25th to review the proposals and has recommended aborting a five-year service contract with an option to extend an additional five years for Green for Life, otherwise known as GFL. This contract is for both recycling collection services and a disposal facility for garbage collected by city staff. Tonight, I'm here seeking approval to enter into this service contract with GFL. Be happy to answer any questions, or Alderman Butch like and Aaron's also served on the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butch like and Allen, and then I believe Alderman Allen, a question?
Actually, a quick question on the Solid Waste Recycling Committee. They show Stephen Chonsky as excused absent, and yet we're just getting his appointment today. How did that happen? That was like?
I entered him into the solid spread, into the system, and so then it looks like he was on a committee, but it was before his appointment, and I caught that after the minutes are generated, so that's why we just marked him as that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Doug? Yes, sir.
I see the truck go by every couple of weeks, and I can't remember, are they the current vendor?
They are not.
Okay.
So the contract 10 years ago is with Viola, and then they changed names to Advanced, then they were bought out by Waste Management, so Waste Management has the current contract.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Are there any big differences in the service that we're going to have from Viola to the Green for Life? Is there any major headlines?
To be honest with you, Green for Life was advanced disposal that was bought by, it was, it was advanced disposal bought by Waste Management with a new name. So we're continuing with the service we had before the buyout of Waste Management.
So we'll, people would still be able to use the same, if you have an overflow of garbage, you can go to the transfer station in West Bend and utilize that still, or that'll still be operational?
All the services will remain the same.
Okay, great.
Great. Any other questions?
Yep.
Burke question and Kayla.
Doug, are we going to get new recycling bins then, or are we going to use the same ones we have?
The tenure contract we had, the language in that contract states that the city owns the carts after the contract term. So the new contract, the GFL provides the carts, and upon immediate distribution, they become the property of the city of West Bend.
I was just curious, because I had a constituent call me, and she dialed the 800 number that's on the side of the cart, which actually is for Viola, and then they didn't help her very well. So we got her to the right place, and it got fixed the next day and all that. Again, most people, when they associate problems or looking for solutions, they look for that 800 number, and it's right there on their cart. That number, it still exists, it's still, you know, Viola doing business, but they don't have anything to do with West Bend. So I was just curious if we were going to get new cards, or like a sticker or something you can put on it with a new phone number, or something like that, or just through our website and advertising.
Well, we are addressing that in the contract language, that the carts they purchase on our behalf do not have their name or logo on it, so down the line, if the contract changes again, we don't have a situation like that.
All right, thank you.
Kayla?
I just had a quick one, I believe it was Hartford, and I've seen a couple of other areas switch carriers in the last couple of months, but a ton of complaints. Any concerns here, are we going to be okay?
There's, they're switching to Greener for Life.
They are switching?
Yes, Hartford's new contract is with Greener for Life.
Okay, I just, I happen to see since some of these switches have been made,
Yeah.
that it's not been good, so I want to make sure we're not.
The problem was with Waste Management.
Yeah, the problem was with their current contractor. Yep. Anybody else? All right, we had, yes, we had a motion to second, great. Hey, if there's no further comments or questions, then all's in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Doug. All right, and number 19, 2022 budget update and funding for compensation plan. We'll have a brief presentation by our city administrator, Jay Shambo. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. This is a result of the last meeting that we had. I'm requesting a follow-up. You have the memo in your packet, which is basically an update on the process to date of our, of our budget process. I don't know if I want to talk through that, if you want me to talk through that document. Simply process-wise, the budgets have been turned in. Carrie and I have been meeting with all the department heads as we normally do, reviewing their budgets in detail and making notes and potential changes and suggestions together, and then we, once we receive all the budgets in, we go back through them, the two of us, and then follow up with departments, begin to have conversations with the mayor and finance chair as we learn more about where we're at. Timing-wise, I know it's always frustrating that it's September 13th, and you're not hearing like the details of what's being turned in, and then the October 4th meeting is really quick, so there's, there's no way to make that any better. I can't squeeze out a couple of more weeks in September. October 4th will be the first time that you see the preliminary budget, and then October 11th, we'll probably try to set up in more of a roundtable fashion like we did last year, if that's, if that meets the approval of the finance committee chair to have a department-by-department discussion of the budget and go through it in some more detail. If there's any questions, I can attempt to answer them, otherwise you're, maybe one more update is, today was the deadline for the compensation RFP to be turned in, and we received four proposals, and the committee members have those four proposals, and we'll be meeting this week Thursday, and then ideally making a recommendation to you at your next meeting on September 20th for an award of a contract to the successful proposal. Any questions, I can attempt to answer them.
Yes, sir.
Not as much a question, Jay, but just, I know we had the discussion. Make sure that as items get removed, just keep a running tally, that maybe a printout at the end, so council's aware of things that have been removed, so that we don't get somewhere down the line surprised by, I never saw that, just so that we have an idea of what's been taken out.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Jay. And then we'll be moving on to reports. First off, report by Alderman Dolnick regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
If you think the library report is sometimes long.
Oh, boy.
No, it's, yeah, we had a long Plan Commission agenda this month, and a lot of interesting things. We had a public hearing and rezoned the area of North Forest and East Water Street from heavy industrial to mixed use, for some future development plans there. We have several interesting situations in which things were being rezoned from two-family or from industrial uses to single-family uses in individual situations, people who were going to make use of some parcels for single-family use, so that was good news. We have a four-unit multi-tenant industrial building that's going to go up at, on East Progress Drive. Lynch, where the Lynch, is that Chevrolet on South Main?
Yeah.
Is, they have a great deal of parking space back there, and they're going to be doing some improvements and some other uses and adding a new entrance, so we'll see some activity back there. Habitat for Humanity, as some of you know, bought the former Skate Country, and they presented their site plan for building alterations. It's going to look very nice, whole area will be nicely cleaned up. The boardroom and garden lounge downtown, we had approval of their facade changes, so that will be looking nice. And you probably saw in, either in the newspaper or on social media, that we were, we did discuss the concept of an indoor shooting range and an outdoor shooting range in the city, whether or not our zoning code should be amended to make those as conditional uses. No vote was taken, city staff will come back with recommendations. The Plan Commission had basically informally no problem with an indoor range concept, allowing that in the zoning code, but a lot of concern about an outdoor shooting range, and we'll have to see how that goes officially.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick? Thank you. We will move on to 21, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board meeting.
Yeah, Downtown Bid Board had their annual organizational meeting where we present the operating plan for the year on September 7th at 8:15, right in this fine room. The financial report was discussed, there were no surprises. We also discussed the roofline lights that are in for a demonstration. They are located on the northern eight feet or so of Husar's Fine Jewelry. If you want to take a look at them, they are an LED design instead of incandescent, so they're, they're more current technology. We also discussed the results of the plan that we surveyed the property owners. There's going to be a second survey that's in the works right now. We're going to go back and we're going to survey the business, or business owners as opposed to the property owners. So, see if we can get some consensus on, on the two groups. The operating plan was presented, and the meeting is available online if anybody wants to see it. It's 45 minutes of your life that you will just cherish.
I watched it for the record, I saw. Thank you. Is there any questions for Alderman Allen? Then we'll move on to a report by Alderman Butch like or Alderman Aaron's regarding the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. Are we going to pick on Alderman Aaron's Butch like? Are we going to do that? Well, now she's looking with a frozen face, okay. John, take it away.
Okay, it was a short meeting. Just basically, we had four, four companies that did do a RFP, and GFL Environment was the only one, the only one that was able to give us a quote for recycling collection bi-weekly as well as weekly, and also for transfer and disposable site. They were the only ones that were able to give us a price on it, and actually, GFL has the same recycling price as what we are paying right now. They stayed at the same price for the beginning year, and then after five years, if the contract is, we can extend that five years, and that sixth year will remain the same without any increase. The increase will be waived, and then we will start over with another five years for the same price as what it was for five. So it was unanimous by the committee to recommend GFL. Jason was at the meeting, and he assured us that there was not going to be any problems. They were willing to give us, make out, or they were willing to do all carts, and we felt that the carts, recycling carts that are out there right now are still in great shape, really not necessarily to have them put all new carts, but he was willing to offer that, and we said it wasn't really necessary, but he would replace any recycling carts that are damaged immediately. All the people would have to do is contact them, and they will take care of it. And that was pretty much it. Tracy, anything to add with that? Nope?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you both, I appreciate it. Any comments or questions for John? Yes, sir.
Just to add on the comments that I made to Doug previously, our current provider, once we figured out this lady's issue and who to get it fixed, they were very quick at getting her, her cart fixed, so that was kudos to them, and she asked to pass that along to everyone involved, so just that.
Doug, if I'm not correct, would it be proper right now, if there are any questions or concerns, to just call the Department of Public Works office, and then they would be able to make sure that everything would be taken care of?
Absolutely. We act as that liaison between the resident and our contractor all the time. Sometimes that works better, so they can call the contractor direct or contact us, and we take care of it.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I'd advise, is just make sure they contact Public Works Department, and then they'll get the proper information.
Great, thanks, guys. And number 23, a report by Alderman Burke regarding the Library Board meeting.
Yeah. Hey, the last meeting of the Library Board was held on August 17th at the library. After completing the business at a board, we received a report from the library director. You notice I passed over the public comment, there were none. So Steve told us about, he had a meeting with the staff from Casa Guadalupe to add bilingual signage and marketing materials at the library, which they believe would help add more utilization from their clientele. He also expressed some, or we talked about considerations that they have at the library, some of those things are, that, there are things that are need attention, roof leaks, door repairs, the alarm system, window tinting treatments, things like that. He just brought us to, brought it to our attention. He provided a handout, which then went into some detail about staffing, budget considerations, book exchange, and new resources. He added that there were over 3,000 people stopped at the library booth at the county fair, which was cool, and the board president gave her a report, which all it did is call Steve out, because Steve neglected to tell us that he was going to be speaking at the Tower Center on the 15th, talking about library history, so she had to remind us that he was going to be there. He thanked her. We talked about upcoming budget considerations, including staffing, CIP, the county, city library taxing methods and things like that, and we did approve some moving of money around for some repairs at the library pertaining to the sprinkler system, and the next meeting is scheduled for September 21st. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you. And our final item is a report by Michael regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Park and Rec Commission met on the 19th, and we did our annual parks tour. Mike and Carolyn did a great job of organizing, getting us all in the van and driving us around. We toured Regner Park Bath House, which I haven't been in in years, was an eye-opener, and definitely needs that project that we're working on currently. We also got an update on all of the events coming up at Lac Lloran, and a couple of the projects that Mike mentioned before with the trails and the Kiwanis. We had a one-year review of the dogs and parks, and there was no comments, no concerns, no complaints, so we will leave that in place as it is. Numerous donations, which Mike already went through earlier in the meeting, he always takes that away, so that, that's fine, but a lot of generosity from the community, and we thank them for that. And that was it.
Sounds great. Any questions for Michael? Then I will open it up to the council if there's any announcements for the go-to-the-order. Anybody? No? No, no? Well, then, having no further business for the common council, I adjourn by to call the chair. Have a good night.